Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mrs. Holt.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Salisbury. Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galletti. Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlet.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman Salisbury and Davidson had contacted us that they are on vacation. Alderman Galletti called in and said he's got a work conflict with his work. At this time, roll call department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poore.
Here.
City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlyle. Jamie Matrit.
Here.
Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belville.
Here.
Okay, Tim was here, I think he's just out in the hall yet. Emily's last day of vacation, she's excused. Chuck is excused tonight, he's covered by Mike Parks. Randy Smith's here for Royce Carlyle tonight, and also Chief Sparker is here for Chief Clay. I think that covers all of them.
Good.
At this time, here comes Tim, so we got that covered. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, the first couple of things I want to clarify is that we are in the process now, we are videotaping the meetings. They will be available tomorrow morning if you go to the Belville, www.belville.net. There's a link there that you can watch the meetings. We are still working, and there's still some, I guess, rich, but fiber concerns, they're working out with Charter and Lindenwood. We met again, and we talked to them again in recent days, but we're getting closer. But one of the comments about the taping is, Alderman, you must speak into the microphone, and if anyone from the audience or department heads get asked, you know, speak during public participation, or get asked to answer a question, department heads, you must come to the microphone because some of the comments throughout the meeting last month, last two weeks ago, didn't pick up when we were responding from our seat, some of the department head answers. So, I just clarify that. I also want to mention that with our disaster plans that we have for this building, if there would be a need to vacate the building for any fire purposes, we would ask you to leave calmly and quietly out through the front door of the lobby, go across the street carefully, and gather around the Sinclair County Courthouse sign in the front. This would give us a chance to try to check and see if friends and fellow department heads and everybody's accounted for as the fire department would come to check out the concern. If we had severe weather, the police officers are out in the hallway, or staff will follow the signs, and they will lead you to the basement of the building here, which is right by the stairs across from the clerk's office, to go downstairs where there's no glass, and it's a safe environment. So that's just the tips about disaster. There's no public hearing this evening, so at this time, I'm going to open public participation. Now, on all the copies of the agenda, and on all the council members' copies, we do have the new rules that we adopted from public participation. I'm not going to read them all to you, you're adults, but I am going to tell you that we must be of good character, we must use good language, and we must remember we're in a public body, that these comments should be of good taste. When you raise your hand in just a second, when I open public participation, I will call on you, you come to the microphone, you give your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to try to speak pertaining to, hopefully, things are on the agenda, are at least for sure, city business. I can't, we can't solve all the problems of the world, we won't accomplish world peace tonight, but we will listen to you about anything pertaining to the city. So at this time, I open public participation. Is anyone this evening, yes sir, in the front row?
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. On tonight's claim sheets, there's two items that I'd like to have further discussion on, both in TIF 3. One is to Bellevue Main Street for $10,000, listed as an annual donation, and the other is Art on the Square for $24,000, listed as also an annual contribution. I would question whether annual contributions for art festivals and contributions to a for-profit company, not city-controlled, is a valid TIF eligible expense? And I also like to say that I still don't have any answers on my three questions for TIF 10 from a month ago, what's the status of those? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kevin Peel, 611 Bristol Lane. I just came in today to make a statement to the city of Bellevue about transparency and normalcy, and things that go on in the city of Bellevue. Well, on April 25th, the city of Bellevue had the parade, the bicentennial parade, 200 year anniversary. And now, this day is a special mark for me. Also, a tragic event happened in my life 21 years ago, on April 25th. My mother was tragically murdered in the city of Bellevue. And so, I grieve every time throughout this year. And this event was a great grieving process for me, because I've overcome this thing, and I suffer from a thing, what is called post-traumatic stress disorder. And overcoming these obstacles, I give it all to the grace of God. And then, I stay here in this wonderful city called Bellevue, we come through, and I see the Jesus and all these things, and I say, "We are truly God's people, let us be God's people. And if we are God's people, let us speak as we are God's people." And I say, "Me, a man of God, and I represent God, and I speak today, and I say, 'This city has oppressed me. There is no transparency here. My father struggled, it's me and my father. We came back to Bellevue, the normalcy. I had never known anything. I went to school here my whole life, from kindergarten to high school. Union, West Junior High, Bellevue West, normalcy. This is what my father instilled in me, and what I give to my children. This is what our soldiers fight for overseas, this is what America is about, normalcy." Now, in saying this, we have a home. When we moved there, we were the first black family on the street. This year, my father's home was foreclosed on. He had trouble, he called the DWI, he almost lost his job, and because of this, he lost his home. The city gave my father two days, 48 hours, to get out. I got him out, I called, I called everybody, I'm asking questions, what's going on with my father's house? How can a man lose his house? I said, "Dad, what happened?" He said, "I talked to the bank. He said, "I had $24,000. They told me, 'We want $27,000, or nothing, you have to pay the full amount.'" And then he said, "No payment agreement, they wouldn't give me a payment agreement." I said, "Are you serious?" And then, after the foreclosure, they locked my father's house up. We had so many things, my children's pictures, all my children's baby pictures are gone, thrown in the trash, because they locked my father's house up. We had so many things, we couldn't even get out of this house. I called the city of Bellevue, because that was the number on the paper, no return phone call, no return phone call from the banks. And I just asked, "What happened?" Then I found out, they sold my father's house for $15,000, when he's sitting in St. Louis with $30,000 in the bank. And this is what I call oppression. This is how a person gets suppressed in this system. Crime-free housing. But I thank the city of Bellevue for what they do, and what they're doing in the bicentennial. The Art on the Square was great, the parade was beautiful, I love it. And I'm one of the people who are trying to make Bellevue a better place, and that's why I speak on things like this, because if no one says anything, how will we make it better? Thank you, you folks have a good night. I'm on my way to work, because I'm known as one of the jobless people in the city of Bellevue. You folks have a good day.
Back in the corner, yes sir. Mr. Lanner, before you start, I'm going to give you fair warning. Your comments tonight have to be appropriate. I had many comments come to me after last meeting about your language, your choice of words. It must be appropriate.
Well, those weren't my words, those were somebody else's words.
Okay, I'm just, I'm telling you now, ahead of time, so you don't get confused, we do not want to hear anything of that nature in this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, you can proceed.
I'll just kind of convey, and that's what goes on in the streets.
Okay, but you understand, you understand our concern.
Okay.
There, from time to time, there's children here, and this is a public meeting, and we want to be of good character.
Okay.
Okay.
Got you. Start, Leonard, 318 South 29th Street, Bellevue. I think most, probably 99% of the people think that Lindenwood give Bellevue a dollar for that school, but they don't, I got the fine print here, after you read the fine print of the deal, Bellevue has to pay them 150,000 every year, plus Lindenwood's got gobs and gobs of benefits that Bellevue taxpayers are paying them. It's really like Bellevue's rebuilding the school for them, and paying them 150,000 on top of it. It's, most people in Bellevue have no idea about that. And as far as Bob Delaney goes, he's probably been working for the city for all his life, Democrat job all his life, but all of a sudden, after he was on a radio program with Mr. Big and the rest of the people who called the shots in this county and city didn't like, all of a sudden, they come down on Bob Delaney like a ton of bricks. But I get, but he was probably doing that same behavior, that hands-on office style he's got, or they accused him of for 20 years, but they didn't, meant, they didn't, it didn't cause a problem until he got off the reservation, you might say. And as far as acting or appearing in lewd or disgraceful manner, I've seen the aldermen, I've been coming to these meetings a long time, and I've seen aldermen talk to other aldermen in a rude, disrespectful manner myself. I've heard, I've never heard a speaker here giving any of the aldermen a hard time. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I come here with this-
Ma'am, would you please start with your name and address?
My name is Kathy Osborne, I'm the, a mother of Christina Koenig that owns property on Colony Drive.
Your address, please.
I'm on 1610 East D Street in Bellevue.
Okay.
And I was over to her home yesterday, and there's some construction going on, it's a dead-end street, there's construction going on, and I was told by a city employee that I was not going to be able to park in front of my daughter's home anymore, and if I did park there, I would be towed away, so.
Okay, and what's the street, ma'am?
Colony Drive, it's right off of A Street.
Tim, do you know of any, or know of any-
A Street?
A Street.
A Street.
Colony off of A, I know where you're at.
Yes.
Do we have a sewer project, or a street project there?
No, we don't have a sewer.
We, I don't know of any street project, or city project on that street, ma'am. If you, if you, this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay.
If you will come take my card.
Sure.
And you call me tomorrow, we will come, we will, staff will come out and look at this, but I, at this point, I'm confused as to what, what project's going on, unless the water company or somebody has a project that they're getting ready to dig up, and I don't know as far as maybe while the project's going on, but I don't know why, nobody would have the right unless this body here-
This is what they're doing, they took the fence down, they put a gate in, they're making a garage back there, and they want a driveway, it's a dead-end street. This is my daughter's home here, and then her neighbor, who's with us as well, this is the street, they're trying to, it's a dead-end, no through street.
Okay, we'll investigate it, but we'll have to find out, I don't, we don't, I don't know off the top of my head right here, okay?
Well, she's a city employee, and she was home, she told me that she had permit, and they were going to correct-
Well, we'll have, we'll have to look at it then, okay?
And state also made another comment, that comment, okay. But I told her she should submit the pictures.
She can submit the pictures if you'd like to now, or bring them if we, you know, I'll send somebody, we'll investigate further, you can leave them right here. But like I said, we need a little bit more information, we're not going to solve this right here tonight.
Sure.
Okay? Okay, okay. If there are any other public participation, yes ma'am?
Joyce Schreiber, 27 South 10th Street. I loved Art on the Square this year, like I do every year, that was fun, thank you. I'm concerned on two of the agenda items, 12C and D, because they do involve street closures again. We do so much of that. Chili Cook-Off, Art on the Square, these are great things, but it seems to get out of hand how often we close streets downtown in Bellevue. For 12C, it's for the Diva Night, they want to close half a block, I guess, on High Street. And I just think to myself, if I lived in Smithdinner, Freeburger, Millstut, or something, and I was bringing my children to the theater at Lincoln, maybe, and I'm driving up here, I know Bellevue, but not that well, and I run into street closures, and it detours me around, well, by the second or third time that happens to me, I'm going to decide from now on, I'm going to O'Fallon, I just don't want to deal with, am I going to run across a closed street? So, if it's a big festival, something like that, there's a lot of banners and advance notices, one thing. If it's just an annoyance to people who are not familiar with our downtown, and they're trying to come here to shop, or to enjoy our theaters and such, it kind of becomes a problem. So I'm wondering if for 12C, if they couldn't decide to move, I can realize that they would want to be downtown, but could they go to Avanon Park, I believe is the name of this small park downtown? So something to consider. And then, for the one right beneath it, for the teacher's graduation, I believe that location they're requesting is Avanon Park, and I'm thinking that if it's, if they have too big of a function that they need to close a street in addition to having the park, then maybe they could consider going to Kimball Plaza at the gazebo, or we also have a beautiful pavilion at Bellevue Park. Neither of those would require that we close a street. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else this evening under public participation? Yes, ma'am?
It pertains to public participation, I'm sorry, I'll use it. It pertains to public participation. I spoke to Bob Sabo about this. I received anonymous phone call, wanting to know if the aldermen are to keep their yards as the public is expected. In my opinion, I thought maybe, maybe we should keep our yards maybe a little better, it's like the judges, they're supposed to set a standard, we're to set a standard. And the reason I'm doing this under public participation, if the person who called on my caller ID, it just said unavailable. So I figured they didn't want me to know who was calling, and I asked Mr. Sabo if he had got a complaint about my yard, and he said, "No." Whereas, I mean, he had received no complaints, had you?
I did, correct.
And maybe it's someone wanting, somebody else's yard of an alderman's is not looking right. So I'm just saying, yes, I received your phone call if you're listening, I don't know what else to say, but maybe our yard should be kept checked on too, just as the public's, because if I get a phone call like that, something's up somewhere. What, I don't know. So I was just wondering if the city wants to-
I mean, without somebody giving a specific name and address, it's really hard to go out and investigate every elected official's home, and we don't have that kind of-
Well, they said aldermen, they didn't say-
Okay, but that would be, that would be making 16 stops for the, for the, for the staff-
It's not got to be done in one week or two weeks, I mean, if they're in that area-
Well, I, I understand, but I'm just saying-
And let the people know, that, I just want the people to know that we are going to-
Well, it's, it's, well, we do check, and we check, but, but we, we cannot exert a lot of, a lot of time on anonymous, no, no name, no specific addresses, we don't have that kind of staff. We just don't. If they can't give us, we don't, we don't give out their names, but if they can't give us an address or some more specifics, we can't just go out and start searching, because then maybe they're confused about an alderman versus a department head. Now we would be checking on 30, 35 people.
Well, I just, I just wanted to let you know that I-
I appreciate that, but I think that-
Received the message, and-
Yeah, I think that we got to, we'll keep it in mind, Bob, and we'll talk about it at staff meeting, but like I said, and I guess to all of us, well, let's do our very best to keep our yards as well as we can. So, we're not exempt from the law, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing that, I'm closing public participation. We will now move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. At this time, this week, I have two committees I'm dealing with, next meeting I'll have the remainder of them, where there's a couple appointments yet. This first one is, I'm asking for a motion that will approve, recommend the following reappointments to the Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. Andy Gah, John Hunter, Jack LaSheen, Charles Moffett, and Ashley Pollak. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Kinsella. Any discussion?
You know, we're still looking for extra-
I know, we had, we had, I met with Andy, who's to be the new chairman today, and we got some ideas, and we hopefully will be back next meeting. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Abstain.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to, I recommend the following reappointments, and one new appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and these are all by ordinance of five-year term. Dan Noeman and Don Rockwell for reappointment, and Patrick Sullivan for appointment of a five-year term. Alderman Schmidt made the motion.
I'll second him.
Second by Alderman Heisler, discussion. Yes, sir.
Yes, your honor, I just wanted to publicly state that I want to go on record thanking Mr. Roger Wigginton for his many years of service to the zoning board. Do we, I know we do, you know, some kind of honor with plaques for people that have been retired, do we do anything with these volunteers, this-
Unless it's been an extraordinary amount of years, of 25 to 30, at that time, sometimes we've seen a plaque, but I mean, he had a term or two. I sent him a nice letter.
Okay.
Thanking him for his service, and, you know, explained that we're in the process of slowly rotating some of these boards.
Okay.
So, yeah, he was thanked.
I just want to acknowledge-
No, I sent a, we sent a nice letter, and I would encourage the rest of you to do, send a letter as well. We have a motion, and we have a second, to approve this for the zoning board. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Dallas, I missed me.
You're correct. Randall.
I'll abstain.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, and I guess I just, look past me too. At this time, I'd ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion, your honor, to-
I'll second it.
-approve the city council, regular city council meeting minutes of May 5th, 2014, so move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt, any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Page 12, the second paragraph, I would like it added on there that the mayor stated we are a strong mayor form of government.
Okay. That's far, that's at least what the IML calls it. We have a motion, we have a second, we have that, note that correction, Mr. Kinsella?
On page nine, resolution number 3187 is not the resolution, there's a mistake there, it was copied and pasted wrong. I don't have my copy, because I left it in the copy machine. So, but that has to be corrected, other than that, it's ready for approval.
And that has been corrected, we haven't-
You've already corrected it.
Or the number was wrong.
No, this, this is actually something we're going to be talking about today.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the copy with me right now.
But you're aware of it already?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, so with those two noted changes, those who made the motion in the second, do you adopt, accept that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have those corrections duly noted, all in favor of approving the minutes as stated, with those corrections signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, claims, payroll, and dispersments.
Yes, your honor, I'll make a motion to pay the claims, payrolls, and dispersments, so move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear discussion? Mr. Hayden.
Yes, sir, your honor, I submitted some questions to the findings director, and I appreciate her getting back to me, I didn't have time to do some follow-up, but she did tell me that page 27, TIF 17, old title, escrow 22,000, was for the purchase of the parking lot at East Washington and Charles. I drove by there, and as of recent, I thought we were going to have those vehicles-
Three of the vehicles have been moved, we will tag them if they don't cooperate, that gentleman, next day or two, but we're trying to be civil. He removed, three or four vehicles have already been taken off. Trailer, pickup truck, one old bus, or one, yeah, one old bus, and then the mobile home was moved over onto his remaining property. So, we still have two to go, I think it is, and they will be dealt with, or I will have the housing officers tag them the next day or two.
And a question was raised of the purpose of us buying it, and my, my basic response was that basically we were land banking this property.
We're trying to create more parking.
You know, and we're land banking it until we could possibly add some-
Yeah, and, and we're going to get some, we're going to have Tim work up some numbers for me, as to what it would cost to even develop some stalls, and see how many we can get out of there immediately. The gentleman, as you know, has given us first right of refusal on the second parcel there for the future, so eventually that'll make a parking lot of about 80 by 140, which will certainly park a number of cars right there.
Then I asked about page 35 on the parks, which I thought they might have been umpire checks, but she, I was informed that these were individuals performing concerts on the square, and the names I didn't recognize, but when, when do we have, already have some concerts on the square?
We've been having them for what, 20 some years?
I know we've been having them, but-
They were even going on when you were on council before.
I know we've been having them, but we-
This early in the year is what he's saying.
No, they start every year this time.
June and July.
It's always June and July. They start on Monday nights, they're here on the, on the square, and then they're in Bellevue Park. It's been 20, how many years?
Long to the next, because I've been here 29, it's been a long time. Have we given checks in May to make some payments?
Yeah, you should hear that, we do the checks in May so that they're handed out the night of the concerts. The night that they were-
That's, that's when I'm getting at, because I didn't think we had done-
No, they're, they're held until they perform that night, and then they're, they're paid.
Okay.
Alderman White.
Can I just remind the people who are coming to the microphone for the reporting?
Yeah, I agree, we need to use the microphones, please.
And-
Yeah, I'm sure, Jamie, I'm sorry.
The, I asked about on page 44, that tourism charter media Midwest, $2,366, what exactly were we advertising?
Jamie, you want to step up to the microphone, I-
Where is that? I don't know. I thought that on page seventeen.
What page did he say?
Okay, that was, uh, the tourism fund elected to buy some, um, TV advertising through Charter for the Belleville movie and some of the other activities going on downtown.
And this was Kathleen Lindar, who does the tourism, um, and there's a tourism committee, and they, uh, they have a budget, uh, as you know, that, uh, that's paid out of, uh, hotel motel tax, and she is, uh, her office, and she's, she's housed out of, works in partnership with the chamber, but actually is technically, uh, funded by our tourism dollars. And, and there's grant money that we get from some of the tourism grants through the state, et cetera.
And the last one is, uh, under the TIF eight, uh, I assume that's for the cathedral, uh, proj, have they completed? I, I thought we weren't going to reimburse them until we, until the project was done, done.
Uh, we paid impact strategies. All they had to prove was that they had, uh, incurred at least that much expense for the demolition, and the demolition was complete, and so they submitted their bill.
Okay. Excellent. I, I would have got back to you if I could, Jamie, but I appreciate the quick response.
Alderman Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I'm a little bit lost here because my packet, the claims ends at page twenty-one.
I, I believe he was referring to vendor number.
Vendor number?
Okay, which would make that last one up, I believe, page eighteen. It's actually vendor fifty.
I don't even have a vendor.
Yeah, because we don't have forty-four pages in the.
Right.
Yeah, it's the vendor number, I think. Alderman Randall. Does that help? Alderman Holt.
Okay, I would like, I don't understand how the Art on the Square falls under allowable TIF expenses.
We checked that out over the years. It comes under marketing, and comes under, uh, it's a match for marketing grant for the billboards, and the billboards go throughout Missouri and throughout the state. There's forty billboards that they put up, and it's a match for that. And the money for Main Street has been something that we've done ever since Bellevue Main Street started probably, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, when the program, I think, I don't quote me for sure, but I think it was ninety-nine, because I think it was about the second year I was on the council when we started the Main Street program. And, and, and that is, uh, been a commitment that we've had in the budget. It was there when you approved the budget, when you looked at it on other budget sessions we've had. Those two items were both in the budget, correct, Jamie? Any other questions? We have a motion, and we have a second to pay the claims, payroll, and dispersments. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
I said aye, because I didn't have the microphone.
Okay, a delayed aye. Um, reports. We have a housing report of cash receipts fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen. What's your pleasure?
Will be received by.
Motion by Alderman Hayden to receive and file.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of accepting and receiving and filing the housing report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Oral reports. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. On behalf of the Master Suit Committee, I'd like to make the following motion. Uh, a motion to accept a bid from three sixty water for a training program for the wastewater treatment plant for a cost of one hundred and nine thousand dollars. So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Ridgewitz.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Health and Housing Committee to accept the low bid of twenty-six thousand from S. Schaefer, uh, excavating for the demolition of the old Laughlin Furniture Building at ten, uh, ten thousand, uh, one hundred and six thousand, correction, ten thousand, six hundred and ten West Main.
Motion by Alderman Ridgewitz, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
No.
Eyes have it. Alder, uh, Silsby's not here. Uh, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. Uh, if there is no objection, I'd like to make the following two motions together and vote on them together.
Proceed.
Motion, the first motion is to approve the low bid of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, uh, from Mettler Development for Huff Park restroom improvements. Second motion to approve the budget, budget amendments encumbrances as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony. Do I hear discussion? Roll call. Yes, sir.
Hold it, hold it. Roll, Mr. Randall.
Could I ask, uh, Alderman Heisler if he would just, um, repeat the amount?
Uh, could I get that, the second one? Yeah, Kent, I'm sorry. Jamie, do you have that amount? I, I apologize.
For the second one?
Second one.
No, the first.
The first one?
First one, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Thank you.
And Kent, would you want the second one, too?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Sorry, Kent. Uh.
Okay, we got, we got that clarified. We have the motion and the second. It's clarification made. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
No.
Motion's carry. Alderman White.
Yes, your honor, on behalf of the Traffic Committee, I'd like to make a motion to create a three-way stop at the intersection of West A Street and North Second Street.
Motion, motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Hayden. Do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
And have the proper ordinance drawn.
Yes, your honor.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, your honor. Uh, I'd like to make a, a recommendation from the streets and grades, the Bellevue Historical Society, Bellevue Walk of Fame, Tumani Brown's plaque, thirteen by sixteen on a precast concrete pad, nineteen inch by twenty-two inch by three inch, supplied by the Historical Society, and installed by the street department. The Historical Society will recommend the first five names that will be submitted to council for approval for the first twenty-five monuments. So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Mr. Betts, are the five names for the first five are ready to go?
Then submitted.
Okay, let's include those in this motion so that the council has a chance to approve the first five names. I thought that was going to be.
It was in the plaque.
I know, but I want to make sure they're in the, in the, in, in the motion.
Do you need the names?
Would you give the names, please?
You got to test me here. Uh, Bob Goby, Buddy Ebsen, uh, George Blair, Lyman Trumbull, and Nene Edwards.
Okay, and we want to include those in the motion.
And, and if I could, there's a slight, I think, typo maybe here. Uh, we've already recommended the five names, and then for additional names, two to four every two years, we will submit that, our proposal to be approved by city council.
Very good, and that's to be understood. The council will have approval, uh, ability on the five names chosen every two years. Okay? Everybody understand that? So we have a motion, we have a second, and we have the names included for the first five. And, um, roll call.
Heisler.
I'm sorry.
We all voted, we all voted yes on this, and it's a very good idea. I just have a question. After working Art on the Square, we set tables in where this is going to be. Will that affect, if people step on these plaques, will that be okay? I mean.
That's actually the whole idea, but our original plan was to actually put them in the sidewalks where you would walk over them. Uh, the mayor did not want to cut up the, the new sidewalks, so our next option.
I wasn't opposed to it, I just wanted to know who was going to pay for it.
Well, the only thing is.
So, so the next option was to put them in that grassy area. Tim and I met and, and agreed on that space.
So, they'll be able to be walked on, because they set tables in that, in there? Okay.
Absolutely.
Because that's really nice right there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to act on item E here on page three. Any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
I'm on the board of the Historic Society, so I abstain.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, I ask for a motion to consider the approval of amended development agreement with FCB Bank for the remodeling of the existing facility located four oh one South Illinois Street with the city offering certain incentives. The only amendment to the agreement is an extension of the, uh, project completion date from May first, two thousand fourteen to May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Kinsella, second by Alderman, uh, White. Any discussion? Um, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners to hire the following probationary firefighters. Kevin R. Beck and Mathias J. Imgren, correct?
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chief, you want to introduce these two gentlemen? Since I might have butchered the one name?
They called Matt.
Okay. Oh, sure you didn't tell me that ahead of time.
Gentlemen, congratulations. I believe we're going to swear you in tomorrow morning. We, we welcome you and, uh, congratulations. Very good. Uh, at this time, I'd ask for
a motion from the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners to promote Jeffrey S. Fabrizio from engineer to fire captain, and Daniel S. Kimball from firefighter to engineer.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Heisler. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries, chief. Are they here?
Yes, this is the view of the engineer.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Communications.
Yeah, you've got it. A, communication from Art on the Square and the Wine, Dine, and Jazz Committee requesting permission to hold their Wine, Dine, and Jazz Festival on June twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, from five to ten P.M., and June twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, from four to ten P.M., and closure of Highway one fifty-nine, one block north and south of the fountain, and Main Street one block east and west of the fountain from eight A.M. Friday, June twenty-seventh, and reopen one A.M. Sunday morning, June twenty-ninth. B, communication from Eckard Floris requesting an extension of time for the flower cooler located in one of their loading zones on North Second Street until Sunday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, due to upcoming events and the need for extra cooler space. C, communication from Bellevue Main Street and the Facial Rejuvenation Center requesting permission to host the Diva Night After Party on Thursday, June nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, from seven to nine P.M. They're requesting permission to close North High Street from Main Street to the end of the, their building on Three North High Street. Setup would begin at three P.M., and teardown will be between nine and ten P.M. They're requesting the city's assistance with barricades and trash receptacles. D, communication from Mark Anstott requesting permission to use the city property located at the northwest corner of East Main Street and Church Street, and closing North Church from East Main to the alley on Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, from four P.M. to twelve A.M., to hold retirement party for four Belleville's teachers.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Heisler, if I may, just clarify a couple things that might answer a few questions. First of all, part of the reason my wife had asked to extend that is because there's a cooler being repaired next week, and it may take a little longer than we anticipated, didn't know it was going to happen. In regard to the facial rejuvenation, this is a Bellevue Main Street diva program, this is not the first year we've done this, this is things they have been doing, and we've been approving in the past, there's a precedent set, but you can always change that, but it's worked well. They get, they bring about, for this particular one last year, they brought about two hundred women downtown to shop and go into the stores and help the local economy, go to the restaurants, go to the stores, and the facial rejuvenation sponsors it that night. The front of the building will still be open for the Lincoln, and they're well aware because they're on Main Street, and they're a part of this. Mark Anstott came to me and asked that this retirement party should generate about a hundred and fifty people from Belleville East High School, couples, teachers for this, all the various faculty. They had talked about taking it to another city, they then contacted Anstott, and he said, "It's a little big for me," but they talked about the space out here. With our approval, we're going to keep about a hundred and fifty people eating and dining and spending some time, spending a little money downtown, seemed like a good thing to me, so I put it on the agenda. So that's the explanation. Alderman Randall?
Yes, sir, my question really has to do with the extension of the liquor license.
The liquor would all, the liquor would all be sold out of his building, or some would go to the wine tap, and right now with the downtown redevelopment, we've allowed, we've allowed in the festivals and with the approval of this council for liquor to be in that quadrant when we have these kind of functions, et cetera. It's been perfectly normal for all the various activities downtown.
I know, this seems to be an exception, okay, with respect to that specific location, it's not spread across the entire downtown area.
It's in that very specific location, and it's, that's why I brought it here to this council for your blessing, but it's not uncommon for anything in the past practice. Okay? Anybody else? Hearing none, I, we have a motion and a second to approve these, is that correct?
Yes.
Hearing none, I ask for all in favor signify by aye, signify by aye by approving these communication requests.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none, resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-one eighty-nine and thirty-one ninety. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Heisler, to read these two resolutions by title only. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, resolution number thirty-one eighty-nine, a resolution resolving the city of Bellevue requests permission from I.D.A. to close Route one fifty-nine at the Public Square from nine thirty A.M. until twelve noon on September first, two thousand fourteen. B, resolution number thirty-one ninety, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Bellevue, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, two thousand fourteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, two thousand fifteen.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Heisler, to approve these two resolutions as just read. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.